All right, everybody. Getting myself together here. And we're just about ready to go. It's five after one. And I will now call to order the April 19th, 2018, regular meeting of the City of Rancho Mirage, City Council, Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council, representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency, and my last full meeting as the mayor of this fabulous city.[31.11][31.11](APPLAUSE). Richard's waiting. He's waiting. And we are now going to go into the flag salute, and I'm going to do it myself. There.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. Now, let me see. I'm going to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Hobart. I need a second on that.
Second.
Please vote. Now, we're going to go for -- I have allergies, so forgive me if I'm croaking up here. We're going to go for roll call, please, Johnny.
Councilmember Wilder?
Here.
Councilmember Weil?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kite?
Here.
And Mayor Townsend?
I am here. Now, we will begin. First is recognition of service of Library Director David Bryant. I'm going to start, David. And here I go. David, let me start by simply saying thank you for leading our award-winning library and observatory over the past decade before you ride off into the sunset, or in this case, to the East Coast. I wanted to take a moment to reminisce one more time like we did the other day. You started on April 21st in 2008 after making the trek from New Canaan Library in New Caan -- I can't say that right. Say it for me.
New Canaan.
New Canaan, thank you. Connecticut on a new adventure. Quickly, our staff and residents knew the City Council has selected the right guy to take the helm of the Rancho Mirage Library and lead it into the future. And you have turned the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory into an educational and cultural center for the residents of Rancho Mirage and the Coachella Valley. You have led the library and observatory, which includes the Rancho Mirage Cultural Commission, Library Advisory Commission, Observatory Advisory Commission, and the Library and Observatory Foundation.
He has to continue to do all of those, you know.
Yes, he does. Absolutely.
Just want to make that clear.
Thank you. You heard that.
His contract runs through 2022, I believe.
(LAUGHING).
You can show up every other Friday, but he won't pay.
Well, starting in 2013, you had you and Jamie Cabler sat down and discussed a new idea. That idea has become the Rancho Mirage Writers Festival. The festival has quickly become one of the best festivals in the nation under your guidance and your leadership. The festival has been seen for the last five years, more than 4,000 readers, 200 authors, including Pulitzer Prize winners and National Book Award winners. The Writers Festival is just one program which you helped produce, David, has taken the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory to new heights over the past 10 years. The library has seen 3 million patrons, total circulation over 5.2 million. I didn't realize when they say circulation, that means books going out?
Yes, it does. Send other DVDs, CDs, audiobooks, et cetera. We can everything, but it sounds so good to say that.
Very good. But that's what it means. It means inclusive. Very good. And over 300,000 patrons in attendance for the programs which we have there, which are mostly free. Everyone knows David is an accomplished wordsmith. He always has the right words at the right time. David is a true librarian. Marion the librarian, or just David? No. Okay. There is a saying in the library world, "If you want an answer, ask Google. If you want the right answer, ask a librarian." David encompasses that very notion, and there are very many people who I have had the pleasure of knowing that could talk about any and every topic with aplomb. David, we are going to miss you, but I understand that you will be coming back. See, Randy, we're not getting rid of him. There it is. It says right here in the script.
And the contract.
And the contract, right. And you're going to be doing guest introductions, various interviews for our RMTV, and be a moderator at 2019 Rancho Mirage Writers Festival. David, in all kindness, thank you for all you have done for the Rancho Mirage Library and our observatory. We congratulate you on your retirement. You embody the mission of lifelong learning. I will now turn this over to our illustrious city manager, Mr. Randy Winder. David.
You didn't think you'd get off that easy, did you?
Testing.
Testing, one, two, three. Come on down.[375.31][375.31](LAUGHING). Maybe I need the Kleenex.
Keep cleansing breath.
You know, I was going to wear my turtleneck sweater in your honor. It's the only one I've ever seen from Connecticut, right?
That's all we wear in Connecticut. That's it.
Exactly. That and cardigans?
That's it.
What's the seersucker? What's the jacket?
Oh, seersucker in summer.
Yeah. It's the only one I've seen out here that he wears. I have some -- I want to read this as opposed to getting it wrong and just paraphrasing it. Is that all right?
Satisfying to me.
Library Director for well over 40 years?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven years, excuse me. Forty-seven years. Ten years with the City of Rancho Mirage. The last 10 years of David's career, the City of Rancho Mirage has been fortunate to have you as our Library Director. You told me that your last 10 years had wings. Now, I thought he was referencing his love for ornithology, because you can do a mean owl, right?
That's right.
You do an owl or a mourning dove?
(WHISTLING) It's a general bird, actually. Any bird.
Any bird. Okay. And it's ornithology, not orinology, right? That's a study of throats? Okay. You ask a librarian. There you go. But I think what you meant, the last 10 years having wings, meant it was the most fulfilling and rewarding part of your career. I think that's probably what you meant. So, along those lines, last 10 years having wings. Jason, do you have some background music, please? David's love affair with public libraries started when he was nine years old in 1957. I had 1913, but 1957, when his mother brought him to a branch of the New Jersey Public Library for a library card. Now, David's mother did not pick him up from that library until he was 13, but that's an issue he's still dealing with, with his psychiatrist, so good luck with that. I, myself, have worked for the city for 32 years. I can tell you that this man, by far, is the best we've ever had. David Bryant, in my mind, is the quintessential library director. Did I spell quintessential correct? Thank you. And he's a consummate professional. Talk about rolling with technological changes. The very definition of libraries has evolved so much over the past 47 years, and in just the past 10 years, that change has accelerated exponentially. We've all worked in offices where we know the technology's changed. Voicemail, email, word processing. Think about libraries. They're not just books anymore. Lot of change. Thank you, Jason. Was that the cutoff where we'd have to pay for copyright? Thank you.
That's right.
So, all the while, this man has kept his ship steady, embracing change and making the most of it. In fact, your crowning achievement is what, converting the Dewey Decimal -- Decimal -- Decimal Index Cards to microfilm? Screwed that joke up. Never mind. But I jest. David's crowning achievement is guiding the library from a local public library to a regional center of?
Culture and the arts and reading and lifelong learning.
Yes, that's what I was getting to. Right, exactly. Correct. You are correct. And one other small thing. The completion of our brand-new observatory and hiring an outstanding astronomer. How's that for David Bryant's evolutionary achievements?[622.29][622.29](APPLAUSE). But wait, there's more. If you want to learn more about David and his plans for retirement and his incredible life, watch the latest segment on RMTV where David interviewed Mayor Charlie Townsend. I think that was recorded two days ago.
That's right.
I'm not sure if it's on Channel 17 yet, but I got to hear the audio this morning.
Did you?
Yes, uh-huh.
That was our third one, too. That was David's idea. It worked out wonderful, and I hope we keep that going.
It was a joint interview, though.
Very much. It was, it was.
Would you like?
No, no, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
You sure?
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm fine.
You have another meeting, right? This is not your day.
I can hide.
No, I'm sorry. I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
Did I throw you off?
Total.
I'm sorry. Nothing like spontaneity.
If you --[681.04][681.04](LAUGHING). So, I watched the latest segment on RMTV where he interviewed -- David interviewed Mayor Charlie Townsend. It was supposed to be a review of Charlie's successes this past year as mayor, but as only Charlie can do, he turned the tables and ended up interviewing David. It's fantastic. So, my friend, you have served the city with gracious gentility and style. Your words I picked up from the interview. In just a couple of corrections, one square mile is 640 acres. You will not receive a brand-new Ferrari. I know you love watching paint dry, and there are nine planets. And astronaut ice cream is delicious. And the new electrochromatic glass has four syllables in the word. Anyhow. David, it's with pleasure and on behalf of the entire city, our city staff, your incredible library staff, our terrific city council that we present to you -- Dun, da-dun, dun, dun. Please, would you?
Whoa.
With respect and gratitude for your decade of service to the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory, City Council, City Staff, Cultural Commission, Library Advisory Commission, Library and Observatory Foundation Board, Observatory Advisory Commission, and the entire state of California. Congratulations.[771.04][771.04](APPLAUSE).
You're the best.
Would you like to say a few words?
Well, first of all, this is absolutely exquisite, so I've decided I'm not retiring. I want this in my office, and I'm going to reclaim the office today, because this is absolutely stunningly beautiful.
Yeah, you have a blessing.
Thank you. Beautifully done. I had actually prepared some remarks, and I do want to --
Are you aware of this was happening?
I saw it on the City Council agenda. My thank yous are extensive, and I won't take the whole afternoon, but this City Council has been absolutely supportive of any wacky idea, any good idea, any generally acceptable idea that myself or our staff has come up with, and we thank you for that forever. That kind of support, financially, emotionally, and politically, is invaluable. Randy, you -- can you imagine working for him? I mean, that's really not hard. What a pleasure. City and library staff, thank you. We have Susan Cook and we have Aaron Espinoza here. Aaron is our next library director, so Aaron's with us today, of course. Steve Quintanilla, I could do an hour on Steve, but I'll do one minute. Steve, what you've given to the -- do you want the hour? What you've given to the foundation, what you've given to the Writers Festival, and overall to the library, you and your incredible team of attorneys, is absolutely thousands and thousands of dollars of giving of legal advice. Now, somebody might be surprised that we need that much legal advice, but there've been some new organizations founded, bylaws created, and this man just gives and gives and gives. And he loves libraries. Solid, solid advice. There've been five key moments in the library's history. 1993, the City Council, then City Council, decided that continuing to pay Riverside County for marginal service, a bookmobile, was really not money well spent. So, that council purchased the bank building at Rancho Las Palmas, Bank of America Building. That was the first library. Key moment. That library opened its doors on January 7th, 1996. Former President Gerald R. Bush -- Ford was there. Forgive that stupid gaffe, but Jerry Ford cut the ribbon that day, and that library was off and running, and almost too small from the day it opened. Planning followed, and the next library opened in 2006. That's been the library that I've been so fortunate to inherit and have supervision of, and it's been an honor. And then in 2014, you made reference to Jamie Cabler. Jamie Cabler, really the founder of the Writers Festival. Susan Cook was there the day it was founded, too, at Tamarisk, and we were off and running that January with the Writers Festival. We will have our sixth Writers Festival in 2019. And 2018, March 25th, the dedication of the observatory. An extraordinary day, 1,000 people in attendance. I've never seen anything like it on a library campus, a public library. I've never seen anything like it. And there will be more. Stay tuned. Library at its best is through the Writers Festival and through programming all year, programming that Susan Cook and I scheme up. The core of our programming, when you really begin to think about it for a speech like this, and I'm sorry if I'm going on a little too much, freedom of speech and opinions. That's what our library is about. Dignified debate on issues. That's what our library is about. Always a civil discourse and many opportunities to learn. We are a house of ideas on a campus of lifelong learning. And then a quote. Now, somebody would think, well, you're preparing to bore an audience for five minutes. Who would you go to for a quote? I went to Calvin Coolidge. How esoteric is that? Well, when Calvin Coolidge was -- is inaugural in 1925, this is what he said, the opening sentence. "My fellow citizens, no one can contemplate current conditions without finding much that is satisfying and still more that is encouraging." And that's exactly what our city is going through. That describes the state of the City of Rancho Mirage and our library now. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve as your library director since April 21st, 2008. These have been the best 10 years of my life and of my career. Aaron Espinoza will become the next library director. Aaron will bring a steady hand to the wheel. My beautiful Angela Lepicka and I will be driving cross-country as of Wednesday, so if you see anything on Google Maps that's a small black Volvo wagon, that's us. And I just want to finish with a thought that helped me for 10 years. Ask not what Rancho Mirage can do for you, ask what you can do for Rancho Mirage. It's been a privilege. Thank you. Thank you, council.
Thank you, David. David? 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 Okay. You done?
I'll do it here.
David, Mr. Quintanilla has a few words for you. Steve?
First of all, thank you, David, for clarifying that our legal services have nothing to do with criminal defense.[1095.04][1095.04](LAUGHING) And, you know, I could roast him for an hour, and I bet a lot of you out there who know David can also roast him for an hour, because he's a real character. But David is one of the most dedicated public servants that I know, and he's a role model not only to his employees, his staff over at the library, but he's also a great, great role model for the many volunteers that work at the library. And he's also a role model for our office as well because of his dedication and hard work and commitment to public service. And David is also one of the kindest, generous, sweetest person I know. And Angela, the love of his life, you're both very lucky to have each other. It was meant to be. But David has been very generous with respect to helping some of the volunteers I work with at other libraries, such as Idowile, 29 Palms, and Desert Hot Springs. And he's been very generous with his knowledge, very generous with providing the books that they could not sell here. And so, on behalf of those libraries, I want to thank you for everything you have done for them and everything you have done for their volunteers. And it's because of your generosity, these volunteers have accomplished many things that they never thought they could ever accomplish before. And but it all boils down that they're able to provide services that were no -- were not provided before to troubled teenagers, particularly in desert hot springs, to seniors, to military personnel in 29 Palms and their spouses, and to a lot of other people who never had or never thought there was an opportunity to go to their libraries and find things that -- like a magazine. And because of David, he's inspired many of them to reach out into their communities and also to come up with creative ideas about how to bring services to these libraries and to the people they serve without having to go out there and beg for money from the government. So, thank you, David. It was -- it's a pleasure knowing you, and I look forward to seeing you when you get back from Connecticut.
Thank you, Steve. Now, we're going to move along with an update.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you may.
David, I'd feel remiss if I didn't say something. I think you and I bonded very early on based upon our eastern heritage, and we've talked about that quite a bit. And now, you and Angela are returning to an area that's very close to where I lived in Harrison, New York, and Connecticut is just a short distance away. You've heard a lot of good things about you. As far as I'm concerned, they've all been minimalized. You took the library to a height that it never achieved before. It was incredible to watch it grow. You did an amazing job, and we're all indebted to your contribution here. David, we wish you nothing but the best. Thank you for your friendship. Thanks for your contribution to our city.
Thank you, Ted. Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you, David, for being part of Rancho Mirage for as long as you have been. It's been great working with you. I've had the pleasure of serving on the Cultural Commission with David, and we have so much culture, I tell you. We took bus rides to East Jesus and Salt and Sea. We took bus rides to Coachella to look at the Great Wall there. But you made everybody that was part of the event really feel special. You know, I think I was probably one of the first people to meet David when he came out to interview for his first job. We thought he was such a great person that we wanted him to be our librarian. We offered him the job, and he said, "Sorry, guys. I was going to stay where I was." But about six months later, we had the opportunity to hire him one more time, and he didn't make the mistake that time. He said, "I'm with you," and that's really why our library is so successful, is that David decided to come back and give his heart and soul to the whole operation and our city. So, David, thanks for everything you've done. Look forward to when you come back, and we'll take another bus ride to East Jesus again.
Thank you, Richard. Iris?
Well, I just want to add my thanks to David for so many things that he has brought to the library. I have the pleasure of working with him on numerous occasions with the Writers Festival, putting together a lot of great information on our Rancho Mirage television that's viewable on Channel 17 with all the lectures, all the fine people he has brought to the desert to speak at our library, and all the personalities that we would never see that are honored by working with David. So, I thank you again, and we look forward to seeing more of your little projects that you are wonderful enough to compose in your workshop, and someday that we'll show your entire video again so that people can really see what you do in your spare time and how creative you are through the years. Thank you, and have a wonderful trip back with Angela, and we look forward to seeing you upon your return.
Thank you, Iris.
Thank you. All right. With that, now we will move along with an update on the Jocelyn Center. Please welcome Aurora Wilson, President of the Jocelyn Center Board of Directors. Hi, Aurora.
Hello. First of all, I would like to offer my congratulations to the three incumbents. Congratulations to all three of you. As the widow of a man who spent four terms on the Palm Desert City Council and three terms as county supervisor, there is something to be said about being an incumbent and representing well the people that have voted you in to serve. So, congratulations. Also want to congratulate Aaron Espinoza. He and I served together at SEVAG for several years, and you made a wonderful choice. You'll find him to be a very dedicated, hard-working individual. It's my pleasure to introduce Jack Newby, the Executive Director of the Jocelyn Senior Center. And with us today also is Paul Clowers, who's our Director of Development. Say hi, Paul. And I want to thank you all again for your support of the Ninth Annual Jocelyn Runway Event recently held last week. It was a great success, so thank you so much. And now, here is Jack Newby. Thank you.
Thanks, Aurora. Hi, Jack.
Mr. Mayor, hello. Members of the council and staff, I have that same allergy going on with me.
Oh, yes, yes.
I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for extending this invitation to us through our new Director of Development, Paul Clowers. We appreciate this opportunity to update you all on what's happening at the Jocelyn Center. And I think the best way to do that is for our clients to speak to you. So, we've brought a video for you to see today, and without further ado, we'll go to the video.
Very good.
When I need help, there's always somebody here for me. It's just too hard. The Jocelyn Center Meals on Wheels program is like a lifeline to me. I wouldn't eat a balanced diet if it weren't for them. We all need a little help sometimes, especially when you get to be my age.
Going hungry is one of the worst things a person can ever experience, and there is so little help today for those that are in need. And I would encourage anyone to think about helping this organization grow so more people, perhaps in other areas, could even benefit from this. They come right to your door, and they're there every single day with food. And it's just such an incredible gesture of compassion and giving. It's a wonderful, wonderful thing that they do.
All the programs at the Jocelyn Center are designed with one thing in mind, and that's to keep people active and engaged in their community. One of the things we find is the seniors are at home and feeling sorry for themselves or don't feel that they can get out and become engaged in their community, that they've lost a spouse or a loved one or a significant other. They become isolated, and everything we do here is to stop that isolation, is to engage people in their community. So, whether it's bingo or knitting or the ukulele club, there's something for everyone at the Jocelyn Center, and people are invited to get involved in programs and to relax in the lobby and have coffee in the morning, and it's a campus. You can walk outside. You can view the beautiful mountains. It's a unique jewel right here in the middle of the valley that's accessible to everybody. Penny's Pantry is our onsite nutrition program that we do twice a month here, and it serves mostly the low -- mostly the low-income seniors and older adults in our surrounding community. But people come here because they can find fresh food and other dry goods that they don't get through other programs. The Arthur Newman Theater is a vital part of the Jocelyn Center. With entertainment, health seminars, and cultural programming, it's a wonderful space for our members and for the public to enjoy. One of the things we're excited about at the Jocelyn is our new Wellness Center, and it's going to be unique in the valley. Go for Life is one of the programs of the Wellness Center. It looks at keeping active in many different ways: balance, endurance, flexibility, and strength. All of those things are critical to making sure that we live longer, healthier, and more active lives.
At the Jocelyn, there's a feeling of community. It doesn't make any difference, your age, your ability to get around, what you're able to do. Everyone here is accepted. There isn't one person on the staff that isn't really dedicated to the well-being of everyone who comes here.
We call it the Four Pillars of Wellness: mental health, active aging, physical exercise and nutrition, and education. And all of those components are going to be at one place, and that's at the Jocelyn Center.
Thank you, guys, for coming in.
So, I just wanted to thank all of you for this opportunity, and any questions, please let me know. And we also, I join Aurora in thanking you for your tremendous support of the Jocelyn Center and what you do to help us and the seniors in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack, very much. Thank you, Aurora. All right. Moving on to the next presentation regarding the emergency preparedness. Is Mary Lou Sutter here?
No.
No? Well, then, we're going to put her off to the next meeting. Now, we'll go to the non-agenda public comments. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda. As a reminder, please limit your comments to three minutes and begin by stating your name and city of residence. And I do have some cards here. First, we have Ms. Virginia Nelson, the wonderful Ranch Mirage Chamber of Commerce with an update. Hi, Virginia.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. First of all, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, we offer our congratulations again to our council members Townsend, Hobart, and Smotrich for your reelection. We look forward to continuing our relationship with all of the city council and staff. Also, a quick congratulations on the opening of the observatory. That is really a spectacular addition to the community, so thank you for that. Now, a brief update on your Chamber of Commerce. During the first quarter of this year, we added 16 new members and still growing every month. The new executive committee is in place and has already been very active on some projects. We're still busy with a lot of events, and there's some new things. Next week, on Wednesday, the 25th, we have our Business Over Breakfast Meeting. Now, that location changes every quarter, and our location for the second quarter is at Desert Ark. Our speaker will be Dr. Joseph Schurger from Eisenhower Medical Center, and he is presenting a topic of Diet and Brain Health. That event is from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. We've started a new event recently called Lunch Mob. We had our first event last month at the Old Spaghetti Factory. Now, this is an informal networking event. It's no cost to attend, other than just to pay for your own lunch. So, that has gone well, the first one. Our next event will be hosted by a maracas restaurant, and that will be on Friday, the 27th of April, from 11:30 to 1:00. May 2nd is the annual All Valley Chamber Mixer at the Palm Springs Air Museum. That's always a great event. Last year, there were over 600 attendees. So, that's great for our business community. That's from 5:30 to 7:30. Then, coming up in May, our next mixer will be at the Ritz-Carlton. So, mark your calendars for May 15th, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We're pretty sure we'll get some good attendance, and that will be a great event at the Ritz-Carlton. And then, the very next day after that is our 13th Annual Nurses Appreciation Luncheon, and that will be at Mission Hills Country Club. That is from 11:30 to 1:00. And as you know, we honor outstanding nurses across the valley, as well as some nursing students. This is one of the events that we are really most proud of because it allows us to give back to our community, and it's always appreciated by the community. Other than that, we look forward to seeing council and staff members and, of course, any members of the public that wish to attend any of our events. Did you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Virginia. Great update, great job.
Thank you very much for your support.
Big schedule.
Yeah.
Very big schedule.
As always. Sorry. Thank you very much.
Bye-bye. Thank you. Next, we will have Mr. Mark Johnson. Please state your name and where you reside. Three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Mark Johnson. I live in North La Quinta. And congratulations to all of you on the election, and congratulations to Mr. Bryan on his retirement and Mr. Binder on his impending retirement. As a recently retired public agency employee, I can tell you, it's a wonderful thing. But I'm here to-- and I used to work in Connecticut, and I know New Canaan, Connecticut, well because I was president of the Stanford Connecticut Water Company adjacent to New Canaan for many years. But I'm here today to talk about water taxes. Very few are aware of the water taxes imposed on the residents and businesses of Ranch Mirage. They are not well-described, and many of them are hidden. In many cases, the annual water taxes are much higher than the annual water bill itself. I've provided you some spreadsheets for your review. I'm not going to go through that in detail, but you can look at it at your leisure. But some of the highlights from these documents, I have compared the water taxes and water bills for four specific homes in Indio, Coachella, La Quinta, and Ranch Mirage. The home in Ranch Mirage has an assessed value of $871,000. And all of these homes are using the same amount of water. But water taxes are based on assessed value, which has nothing to do with water consumption. Using about .2 acre-feet per year of water consumption for all the four homes, the water bill, the annual water bill for the home in Ranch Mirage would be $165 per year. However, the water taxes are $1,318 per year. So, the water taxes are actually eight times the water bill. And if you put that in a per-acre-foot basis, that's $6,600 per acre-foot, which is probably the highest per-acre-foot charge for water, certainly in Southern California. I had proposed to the water district that rather than base water taxes on assessed value, that at least the state water project tax be based on acreage. $100 per acre would do the trick, and a few other changes. So, if that one change and a few others are implemented, as I proposed, and actually also having one replenishment assessment charge for the entire Coachella Valley, not three separate ones, the total water bill and taxes for that same home in Ranch Mirage would go down to $2,387 per acre-foot for a 64% savings. So, just implementing that change levels the playing field. And I also provided an example of agricultural property because this is where the shift will go. It'll go to agriculture. An existing agricultural property in Coachella would go from $42 per acre-foot to $74 per acre-foot. So, that's not a big change, and it's certainly less than thousands per acre-foot for water. And this becomes very important because soon, there could be more water taxes coming your way. If CVWD signs up for the state water project improvements, also called CAL Water Fix, this one project alone could raise your water taxes by 30 to 50 percent. So, I hope you spread the word, take a look at this seriously, because a lot of people think it's just the water bill. It's not. It's the water bill plus your water taxes, and it's been kind of hidden for all these years. So, thank you very much. I have a website called CVH2Go, where I have a lot of information on water issues in the Coachella Valley. You're sure welcome to look at that and call me anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate that. Next, we will have Mr. Bill Raisin from the Airport Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon. Council members and staff. Before I start talking about the airport, I just, again, want to congratulate Iris, Charlie, and Dana, who's not here, on their reelection, and also Randy Binder and David Bryan's retirement. Congratulations, and I hope they enjoy their retirement as much as I have in the last 15 years from state service.
Yeah, I was thinking about applying for the Airport Commission.
You have to talk to me first. Anyway, excuse me. The airport, the big thing now that we're doing at the last meeting last week and the coming meeting in a couple of weeks is the proposed 2018-19 budget, airport budget. It's about, it's over $20 million, sometimes $30 million, depending on how much money we get from the FAA and grants for improvement projects. The revenues that we've received at the airport have increased 21% in, over last year. That's a lot. Most of that increase has been from the car rental income. And believe it or not, the airport receives about a third of the entire budget from car rental income. And that revenue has increased about 44% in the last year because the airport, I think it, I believe it's $10 per car rental that the airport receives. And like I said, that's the biggest portion of all the revenue that the airport receives, about a third. Most of this increase is because of the increased travel. Higher airline activity are, this past year, we've, we're up over 2.1 million passengers, which is quite an increase. We've got 10 airlines serving the airport now. Some of these are seasonal, and we're getting into our off-season here in the next month or so, so there'll be a lot less flights coming in and out. As an example, instead of about, I think we had about 40 flights a day coming in during our season of February, of January, February, and March, and in another couple of months, we'll probably be down to 15 or 20 flights a day coming in during the summer months. As an example, the number of passengers, I don't have it here, but anyway, it's during the, during our season, January, February, March, we have a couple of hundred thousand people flying in, or total, total employments, about 100,000 coming in and 100,000 going out, or a little bit more. During the summer, it's down to about 70,000. Big, big difference. Oh, yeah, it's a big difference, yeah. By the way, the, like I said, 2.1 million passengers, that's a 7% increase from year to, from last year. So, the airport is really thriving. And as I said, most of Ranch Mirage is under the final approach course into Palm Springs. And so, when people complain about overflights and noise and everything, they'll be relieved to know that that number will be reduced by about half in the next couple of months and for the next few months. Some of the projects coming up at the airport, we're still looking forward to expanding the ticketing wing of the airport. I think I mentioned this a few months ago when I gave you--
You did. Did they start that, Bill?
No. Next year, in 2019, during the summer off-season, where it won't be quite as disruptive to traveling public. And that'll, that'll be going on. The other thing that's going on right now, in conjunction with the ticketing expansion, is you won't see it if you go to the airport, but if you, on the sunny Bono concourse, the main terminal, where you go up the escalator to catch your planes, you ever wonder what's It was, it's empty space that's never been, been developed. So, what the, what the airport is doing is they're converting that into office space for the airlines who are going to be displaced when they move the ticket counter back 15 feet, and they'll lose that office space. So, that's undergoing, being undergone right now to move the airline offices, which, behind the scenes, down below, again, behind the scenes, you'll never see. The other thing that's happened here very recently is the city of Palm Springs has now allowed Uber and Lyft and those companies to pick up passengers at the airport. And if you, if you go to the airport, you'll see signs where the, these transportation network people pick up places and signs to have you, when you get off the, out of the airport, pick up your baggage, waiting for an Uber, it'll give you signs on where to, where to go. So, that's, that's new and exciting. Other than that, there's a lot going on at the airport. I don't have time to go into detail on everything, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
It's always up, up, and away.
Up, up, and away. Thank you, Charlie.
Always, every time you give a report. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any questions, Bill? Good? Okay. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate you very much.
I must have done something right. No questions?
I guess you filled it all in.
Thank you.
You want to say something?
Clarification on Mr. Johnson's comments about the water district taxes. Just to clarify, those are not city taxes. Those are water district taxes.
Very good. Thank you.
So, that means that he needs to go to the Coachella Valley Water District Board meeting. So, they have their board meetings listed online.
Good. I'm sure you do, Mark, right?
He's the Director of Engineering for Coachella.
Good. Thank you very much. That clears that up. Next, we will have Mr. Brad Anderson.
Thank you, Brad Anderson, Ranch Mirage.
Hi, Brad.
And it's great information about the taxes. I think, I think he just wants people to know about it. And I know the Vector District has those taxes, too. Thank you. I'm going to try to stick to my script here.
Speak into the mic.
I'm sorry. I'll try to stick to my script. I would like to first thank Mr. Binder for his outstanding work and commitment that he has shared with this city for so many years. Without his dedication to the art of mitigation, I know that I would have been in litigation a few times with the city, and may I add, I would have been justified. But, Mr. Binder, you will be missed. Thank you. Years ago, I contacted the city code compliance department to voice my concerns about my neighbor and their home-based business that they've been operating. This is after my neighbor declared war on me, and that's because they said they had the ear of the city, and they would do as they wished. And years later, it appears they were right. I'm just, I'm saddened that myself and my neighbors had to suffer, you know? It really is for a number of years, just for other companies to profit. It really is for a number of years, just for other companies to profit. I would like to close with stating that the, you know, I guess, this, the United States of America and people that serve, not just protect what we have, but to preserve its values, okay? And I hold that with the utmost respect. And I'm very disappointed and saddened when people and businesses use them and other horrible acts that have been taken against defenseless young persons for financial gain. I'm an animal lover. I do not pretend to like certain things, dogs being one of them, for the sake of making money, or to appear as a giving person, but it does happen. So I ask that you please investigate people, organizations, foundations that you give money to, even if they advertise themselves as Rancho Mirage residents. I'm going to close again, I'm sorry about this, with asking that the cities and others please refrain from any acts of reprisal against me or my property for talking to you today. I have had negative actions taken against me in the past for disclosing the truth and upsetting the status quo. U.A.M.Car, Mr. Libby, and the City of New Wells has examples of such actions. And I'm just gonna, one more thing. I'm gonna go ahead and read my script here. One more thing, as of yesterday afternoon, I noticed that the Steer is an active mosquito breeding site, a neglected swimming pool, that I reported to Mr. Witty, who's the general manager with the Coachella Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District, back on April 10th. This site has been allowed to cause a potential disease to people in my neighborhood, and I think it's mainly because of poor management, and allowed discrimination from that staff. If you, if you could please look at my concerns about that, because they have been unanswered to the, to the, to this date. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Next, we will have Mr. Joseph Klassens. Klassens? Thank you. State your name again and where you live. Three minutes, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Joseph Klassens. I've lived at the Rancho Mirage Country Club since 1998, so for 20 years. Up until two years ago, it was a delight to be there. Of course, the city of Rancho Mirage is an unusually pleasant community, and we have rather had a small, neighborly, comfortable club. But I think you know the sad history of the last two years. In 2016, Oasis Ranch purchased our golf course. Its agent, a Beverly Hills criminal defense attorney, immediately erected a chain-link fence around the back patios of our homes and let the golf course die. You know that, and quite frankly, you were our heroes. You rescued us by having the fence taken down. What you don't know is the longer-term consequence of those actions. For a period of months, until the city was able to act, we'd wake up every morning, look out our back patios through this chain-link fence at a grim, brown, reclaimed desert environment with dying trees and dead grass. Now, the grass is green now, and thanks to you, the fence is gone, but the trauma remains. And why do I bring this up? Well, Oasis Ranch is currently shepherding a proposal for redevelopment of our golf course through the various city departments. It's framed as a hotel project, but fundamentally, it's a multifamily housing development. It increases by 41% the housing density of our club. It also seriously damages the view for those of us who are in the inner circle of homes, and the architectural plan contrasts violently with the existing Spanish Mission style. Now, I think Oasis Ranch will make much of the fact that, at the end of last year, there was a vote by the homeowners, and they overwhelmingly approved the lifting of restrictive covenants, which would have prevented additional housing units. Oasis Ranch will probably say that shows support for the project. I'm here to tell you, that's really not the case. Quite frankly, we were scared to vote no. It wasn't stated, but it was inferred that a no vote would mean the fence went back up and the golf course died. Most of us just didn't have the courage to contest Oasis Ranch anymore. If you want to know our true feelings, look at how many people are trying to sell out of the Rancho Mirage Country Club. In just the last nine months, about 10% of the homes have been listed for sale. People are just trying to bail out of that club. Now, we realize that some development is necessary. It's inevitable. We cannot go back to what we had. But we don't want you to buy Oasis Ranch's argument that the massive scope of their project is something we welcome. We would have been happy with the original settlement agreement, which limited to 18 acres the building inside the club. But then suddenly, for no reason we've been told, it was increased to 25 acres, which has a dramatically different impact. So what we're asking of the city is that you don't bend the rules or waive any regulations, treat this as a normal project, apply rigorously the guidelines you have. We'd like a project as small as possible, because that would have the least impact on what was a very enjoyable lifestyle. We'd also ask you to realize that you're setting a precedent. To the extent you make it easier on Oasis Ranch, you encourage it and other opportunistic investment groups to use the same tactics against other Rancho Mirage homeowners at other golf clubs. And to the extent they're able to do that, the character of the city itself may change. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Steve, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Sure. These are just general comments about what I know about the status of the project. Well, yes, they, they put up the fence, you remember that, and grass died, and through the efforts of code enforcement, or code enforcement staff, it made it really easy for us to go to court and get a court order to have the fence removed and to get the grass water.
Yeah, we thank you for that. A lot of us opened bottles of champagne when we saw your trucks come out.
I just want to kind of refresh their memory. In any event, so after that, I know the staff, including my office, have had several conversations and meetings with representatives from the HOA board, because we can't talk to everyone. And so we, you know, we asked them to, you know, set up a committee of some sort that will speak on behalf of the HOA board. And so the, and in the meantime, I had discussions with the attorney who represents the developer. And so this is why I know what's going on from the planning perspective. At this point, the applicant, the owners, have submitted an application for the planning and development entitlements, and Bud Cop, our planner, who's processing this, deemed it incomplete.
I've spoken with Brad, and he told me that.
So it's going back to them, and once it's deemed complete, there's going to be a number of planning, there should be planning commission meetings, public hearings, there may be study sessions, but the council's going to make the final decision. And you, every resident in there, will receive public notice, so I encourage everyone to show up at these meetings. But one of the things that came up in our conversation, in my conversation with the attorney, Jim Vaughn, is that I, I suggested that we enter into a development agreement with the developer. And the developer, and the reason why I suggested that is because I had concerns that, you know, the HOA or the residents weren't going to get what they expected they were going to get when, when the HOA settled with the developer. And the way we're going to do that, and he pretty much agrees, is that we're going to sit down with the HOA, representative of the HOA, and ask, what was represented to you? If you, if they represented that they were going to pass title of, you know, the golf course, they're going to lease the golf course, who's going to maintain the landscaping? We'll put that in the agreement, and we'll make the HOA a third-party beneficiary, meaning that if the developer in the future doesn't follow through on its legal obligations, the HOA can come in and enforce those provisions, along with the city. So we're keeping an eye out on what's going on with this.
Yeah, up to this point, agreements have been shifting, because the original settlement agreement specified only 18 acres would be used, and quite frankly, we were happy with that. If you look at the map, the increase from 18 to 25 is a dramatic change. What it does is creates just a narrow corridor around these multifamily units between those and, and the homeowners. So it, we don't really trust what's been going on, is what boils down. And there was no explanation of why that occurred or who approved it. But thank you.
Very good, thank you, Joseph. Thank you, Steve, too. We have next Robert Anzovino. Robert? Hello, Robert.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
State your name.
City Council. My name is Robert Anzovino. I live at 6910 McCallum Way in the City of Cathedral City, California. Since everybody is up here touting their East Coast connections, I would like to say that I grew up in Sleepy Hollow, New York, and attended Sleepy Hollow High School, and was lucky enough to meet my schoolmate at the LPGA event in Rancho Mirage the other day, Caitlyn Jenner, and got my picture taken with her. I sent a letter to the mayor and to the city manager with regard to my thirst for educational opportunities now that the library has built an observatory. And I happened today to come by to see if there was an answer and was lucky enough to find myself at this meeting that involved everything about the library, its former director, and the new opportunities available at the library. So just to make it short and concise, I have an excellent background. My educational experience has brought me here to the Coachella Valley, where I got my third college degree in golf management. I ran the dining room at the exclusive club at Morningside and passed Secret Service clearance to serve both President Ford and Betty Ford, and President Bush father with the Prime Minister of Japan in 1990. So my appeal for the City of Rancho Mirage is to reinstate my abilities to use the educational facilities of the new observatory, because I have a thirst for knowledge that Director Bryant spoke about as he was going on his new journey. I hope my new journey includes more education that's available through the library system. I thank you for your time today.
Very good. Randy, is there any way that we can direct him?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll reach out to this gentleman, and we'll have a conversation.
There you go. So all you have to do is-
Oh, oh, okay.
Just call Randy, and he will talk with you. Thank you, buddy.
Is that your part at the desk?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. And we have, Johnny, we have one more?
Yes, we have Palm Desert Charter Middle School.
Very good. You guys want to come on up? How you doing?
Hi. Good afternoon.
Welcome.
My name is Beth Bone, and I'm an eighth-grade teacher at Palm Desert Charter Middle School, and I have two students here that are representatives that would like to personally thank everyone today on behalf of our eighth graders.
Very good.
Hello, I'm Kiki Burke, and with me is Aliana Rakipi. We are here today to share our experiences of our annual trip to the Museum of Tolerance, and to genuinely thank you for your support.
Most of you know that the eighth grade makes this trip up every year. It is a culmination of a study of perseverance in the face of adversity that focuses on the Holocaust. This year, students read novels related to the Holocaust, visited the Palm Desert Civic Center Memorial, and heard a survivor's testimony.
This video we are about to watch was prepared to thank you personally, as well as the City of Rancho Mirage. We are grateful for your annual support of our school.
Recently, our eighth-grade class at Palm Desert Charter Middle School has been immersed in the study of the Holocaust. We have read books, met a survivor, and visited the memorial and Palm Desert Civic Center Park. My peers and I have read about the Holocaust in books, looked at art pieces, read heartbreaking poems, et cetera. But even that was not able to reach me as much as the Museum of Tolerance did. Because of your generous donation, 492 students and chaperones were able to tour the Museum of Tolerance in Los Angeles as a culmination of this interactive unit. Walking through the gas chambers was frightening. As I walked through them, I could feel all the pain and sorrow of many Jews, and it got me thinking about how anyone could be so heartless as to send a person through a chamber of death, and treat them like they were as little and useless as a grain of sand. This study has provided a pathway for us to confront our present concerns involving loyalty, peer pressure, scapegoating, conformity, and belonging. Abolishing the civil rights of one group can lead to the abolition of those rights for all, so each person must take a stand against evil or eventually risk forfeiting all individual freedom.
Diane Ardocant said that we need to speak up, because our voice is the strongest of them all.
We all have a little bit of "I want to save the world" in us, especially the teachers, and that's why they took us to the Museum of Tolerance. It's okay if you only save one person, and it's okay if that person is you. By studying the past to understand the present, we have learned that human beings possess the power to control their behavior. So we are all aware of the importance of making choices. We realize that one person can make a difference, and that our words have power. Thank you for this life-changing experience.
Again, we wanted to thank you personally for your generous contributions. If there are any further questions, we would love to answer them for you.
Well, you guys did very good. Any questions, Council? Well, I happened to be at the Holocaust Memorial Sunday and was honored to do a reading, and it was very moving, and it's something that we should all never, never forget. You guys are very privileged to be able to go back and see that.
Yes, thank you for your help.
Thank you, guys. Very good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may make a comment?
Yes.
First of all, I want to thank you so much for that beautiful video that you made, and I know you come here every year and thank us, and it's our honor to be able to provide so many children that are able to go and view something like this. that are able to go and view something like this because it's, unless you go and see something that is so relevant and so touching, it's hard to imagine. What people don't realize is that there are seventeen million people that were killed during the Holocaust. There were six million Jews. There were three million Poles. There were two hundred and seventy thousand disabled. There was fifteen thousand gays, five thousand Jehovah Witnesses. There were multiple, multiple priests and nuns. So, in a world in which we're living today, we must be so aware of the hatred that we're all seeing, the rise in hatred, and know that we have the ability to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. Very good. Thank you, everybody. Now, are there any other people in the audience who did not fill out a card who would like to speak at this time? All right, seeing none, I will move along to Council comments. And if I may, I will start. This April held an election in Rancho Mirage for three incumbents, I being one of those, along with my council members Dana Hobart and Iris Matridge. The outcome of this election was a win for us. I will say that elections are not easy for any elected official. Meeting the challenges along with defending our positions against those who protest, we are not doing the best in their opinions for Rancho Mirage. This, of course, is a challenge. I accepted that challenge with truth and with dignity. My heartfelt thanks goes out to those of you who took the time, not only doing these last few months, but those of you that always keep an eye on the ball when it comes to this council's decisions that are made during the past years for the best direction for Rancho Mirage for today and tomorrow. Electing me to my next four-year term to represent you and the continued success for the future of Rancho Mirage is a sacred trust which I accept humbly. I also had the honor of presenting a few weeks ago, back as your mayor, the state of the city for 2018. I, presentation, this one was attended by over two hundred people. And I want to now take a few minutes to present the conclusion of that program which captures the many recent achievements by this council and the staff of your city hall. You may find answers to questions that were addressed during this campaign. Jason, roll the footage. Rancho Mirage accomplishments. Sixty million in reserve balance budgets since incorporated. No unfunded pension liabilities. No debt. Five percent savings on Edison Energy costs. World-class healthcare. One of the finest libraries in the nation with free programming and events. Nearly four hundred thousand library checkouts annually. Free energy ambulance services, emergency ambulance services, residents that live in within Rancho Mirage. A variety of cultural programs throughout the year. Sixty miles of bicycle paths. A thriving economy and commerce. Sixteen city commissions with ninety-four volunteer positions. World's most successful writers' festival. Our four affordable senior housing communities. Best-maintained streets and parkways. Our beautiful parks. Our synchronized traffic signals. Our free CERT training for the community. Home of the much-loved Children's Discovery Museum and the Museum of Tolerance. Residential golf programs. Our fantastic art affair. Our pet adoption reimbursement program. Responsible growth and development for our city. A hundred and thirty new businesses during the last two years. Inaugural Wine and Food Festival. Our annual community blood drive. Over one hundred thousand in charitable giving to nonprofits. A hundred and six thousand contributed to homelessness programs this year alone. Municipal Equality Index Score of one hundred. Over one million contributed to Roy's Homeless Shelter. Water Savings Turf Rebate Program, funding of nearly over four hundred thousand dollars. Our state-of-the-art observatory. Our beautiful amphitheater in our beautiful city of Rancho Mirage. Thank you very much for coming here and listening. Thank you. Appreciate that. I just wanted to share that with those of you who may not have seen it because there was no coverage by any media of this program. So, I felt those of you who are not aware or could not attend, but for you especially who did come out and vote, I wish to share the programs and achievements of your city council and your wonderful city staff for what was accomplished this year in Rancho Mirage. Thank you again for your vote of confidence in me representing you on this, your council. Thank you. Now, I will move along to Mr. Richard Kite, Mayor Potem.
Well, Charlie, you know you're going to be back in two weeks. You're not disappearing from Rancho Mirage.
Yeah, but this is, the next I got to turn it over and walk away in sadness. But I'm here.
So, everybody can come again in two weeks and hear a little bit more about what you did and what we're looking forward to in the coming year.
Thank you, Richard. We're looking forward to you being the mayor, too.
One o'clock, next, two weeks from today.
Mark that down. Are we having cookies and candy or anything? Streeters? Do you want it, do you, do you want it now?
Oh, Charlie, you know, one of the items that you mentioned in the summary there was the beautiful amphitheater. And we've spent so much time making it really a showcase in the desert. And so, I just want to mention a little bit about the new program that's been, began last week. And the City of Rancho Mirage debuted the Cinema Under the Stars series this past Saturday evening with a screening of Casablanca at Rancho Mirage Amphitheater. Cinema Under the Stars is an outdoor cinematic experience presented by the City of Rancho Mirage in partnership with the Desert Recreation District. This year's series showcases some of the great Hollywood classics of five consecutive Saturday evenings. All the films are free to the public with gates opening at six-thirty PM and showtimes beginning at sunset. Although there is a limited number of seats available, patrons are encouraged to bring their chairs and blankets and make themselves comfortable. So, you can pack a picnic basket or bring some takeout food from one of Rancho Mirage's restaurants and really enjoy Cinema Under the Stars. Popcorn, you say? No problem. Complimentary popcorn and bottled water are both provided. The remaining 2018 Cinema Under the Stars schedule is next Saturday, Cinnamon Cane, Citizen Cane, then followed by Breakfast at Tiffany's on the twenty-eighth of April, Singing in the Rain, one of my favorite movies, on May fifth. And then finally, the last week, The Wizard of Oz. How can you beat that? A free movie. See The Wizard of Oz, have popcorn, and just have a great, great under, great fun for everybody. So, come out and see the free movies. I think you'll really enjoy it. And we're really going to add more and more to the beautiful amphitheater in the future so that it becomes a showcase of the desert, which it already is. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, Richard. Ms. Matridge?
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. And welcome, everyone. I would just like to take a few moments to express my sincere gratitude for the reelection of Mayor Charles Townsend, Dana Hobart, and myself. We are all people of strength who are dedicated to doing the very best for our residents, our businesses, and our visitors. We highly value ethics, experience, honesty, and truthfulness and are privileged to again continue providing Rancho Mirage with the finest amenities, fiscally sound government, and the best lifestyle possible. Through the years, I have met and spoken to many wonderful people and had the pleasure of telling them, many people, about the Coachella Valley and our fabulous city and its great achievements. And interestingly, there's one question I am frequently asked. And that is, how does the City of Rancho Mirage get so much accomplished and so quickly and so perfectly? So, I would like to take the opportunity to explain a little bit about the process we follow. As most of you know, Rancho Mirage is unlike most other cities. Our council members are able to work directly with staff members without having to go through the mayor, the city manager, or the city attorney. And if we have questions regarding any project or issue, we just simply pick up the telephone and call the staff member to have our questions answered. With this council, here is how a typical decision on a complex matter is made. Before the council makes any decision, the city manager will often contact the mayor and ask that a council subcommittee of no more than two council members be appointed to deal with a specific issue or for a temporary period of time. Sometimes, a council member will also ask the mayor to appoint a subcommittee. The purpose of the subcommittee is to identify issues in advance that the subcommittee believes may be inconsistent with the council's collective vision of the city, although we are forbidden by law to discuss any of these issues with a third council member outside the context of an open public meeting. After staff and the subcommittee has thoroughly reviewed a matter, staff will then place the matter on an agenda for an advisory commission to consider, such as the Planning Commission, the Emergency Preparedness Commission, Library Observatory Commission, et cetera, for a recommendation to the council. At the advisory commission level, they have open public meetings that allow the public to comment about whether they, whatever they are considering. After the advisory commission makes a recommendation, the matter is then placed on a council agenda. By law, the agenda must be posted at least twenty, seventy-two hours before the open public meeting at which the council will consider the item. During the meeting, the public will, is entitled to comment about any matter on the agenda at or prior to the time the item is considered by the council. Once a verbal staff report is made at the meeting and public input is received, the council will ask staff questions about issues of concern. After all questions are answered by staff, the council will then deliberate an open session until someone makes a motion which must be seconded before a final vote is taken in open session. This is the typical process the city goes through for many items. However, in some cases, if the item is very complex and/or controversial, the council will sometimes hold study sessions that are open to the public. Like regular council meetings, the agenda for the study session is posted and the meetings are publicly noticed. No decisions are made at the study sessions other than directing staff to work on the matter more or let, or to work on the matter more or to place the item on a council agenda for consideration. So, in closing, I hope I have made it very clear that this city council will not only complies with all applicable laws governing how we make decisions, but we also go far beyond the normal process by engaging a council subcommittee to work with staff on ironing out many of the details that may create problems for the city or be inconsistent with the council's vision of the city. The subcommittees, however, do not make any final decisions on any matter. The only authority a subcommittee has is to report what they discussed or decided about a matter during an open council meeting. Just because we end up with voting five-zero on matters does not mean we violated any of the laws that I just mentioned. Rather, the five-zero votes should be viewed as evidence that the entire council believes the decision is made in the best interests of the city and its residents. In other words, a unanimous vote shows that the entire council has total confidence in their decision as a body and there is no doubt that their decisions were anything but the best for the city. If there were three, two, or four, one votes, that would indicate that certain decisions were made with some doubt. So, as most viewers of our council meetings have seen, almost all of our votes are five-zero, something of which we are very proud. Be right there. Another item I would like to briefly mention is something that is quite noteworthy. Anyone on our council, any one of our council members can put an item or a presentation on a council meeting agenda. This is something absolutely unheard of at other cities and most cities. So, to sum it up, we are indeed probably the most unique and efficiently-run city in the state. Your city council does not just show up and vote yes on items. We read, we study, and we research, if necessary, every document and agenda item presented to us. And we then vote accordingly. We extend the utmost respect to our fellow council members as well as every staff member. We value the opinions of each and every person who takes part in the running of the city. And we especially value the opinions and input from our community members. So, I hope this explains just why Rancho Mirage is one of the best of the best cities around and why we are so proud of all we offer and so proud of all of our accomplishments. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Iris. That was an amazing thorough answer to a question that we have been asked several times. And I hope that everybody listens to what you said or reruns it again if it's on TV and know that what you have put together speaks for all of us and staff. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Wild?
Yes, Iris. That was very well done and certainly exemplifies why this council runs so smoothly, without a doubt. And I, too, want to congratulate my colleagues on their reelection. The nine-two-two-seven-zero zip code remains quite busy. And it retains a cachet second to none. We welcome Medici, the Neapolitan Pizza Company, to the river on April nineteenth with a reception and ribbon cutting. Medici offers a fantastic ambiance and a variety of menu options, including Neapolitan pizza and their signature Nutella Calzone. It really is a beautiful restaurant, a great addition to the river. There's also an extremely attractive patio for... There's also an extremely attractive patio for outdoor seating and dining. This past Monday, United Cerebral Palsy of the Inland Empire held a ribbon-cutting ceremony at their new office on Highway 111. I've expressed previously here my particular view of UCP, having been a major part of my family for many years. These are just two examples of the many great things happening in Rancho Mirage the last several weeks. The city is working on, with new owners of the former electric car distributor, on the property and plans to open a new Ferrari showroom. This will be an exciting addition to our community. And again, it represents a very high-end automobile, consistent with the others that are represented here in our city. It's quite remarkable that you have the class and style that ends up dome-asyluming here in Rancho Mirage. Work continues on O'Kane's Irish Pub at the Rancho Mirage Marketplace, which is home to Gelson's Market. This project has been under wraps for a long time, and finally, ground has been broken. It's generating a lot of interest from the surrounding community. There are a lot of rooftops in this area, and it's expected to open next fall. This will be a very, very welcome addition. One of the major events that has happened and will be developing, probably over the course of the next 20 years, is the purchase of Section 31. This is roughly 680 acres, bound by Gerald Ford on the north, Frank Sinatra on the south, Bob Hope on the west, and Monterey on the east. This area is being master-planned. It has not been submitted to the city as of yet because the escrow just recently closed. But this is an entire section which will be developed for mixed use, including residential, hotel, and commercial areas. This last major remaining piece will be, you know, a game-changer as far as our city is concerned. It'll be quite remarkable. That and the future development of Section 19, which is to the east of Bob Hope and going down to the Aguacaliente Casino. Those two properties are the single largest remaining pieces in Rancho Mirage. Obviously, the Pulty Home Development, the Del Webb Project, now under construction with a little under 1,100 homes, will also be built out over the next seven, eight years. So there's a tremendous amount that's going on in our city. It's vibrant, it's exciting, and it's fun to be here. And obviously, we'll be sharing a lot of details with you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Appreciate that. Now, let me see, I think we will close that comment part. Now, we're going to move on to the approval of the special minute meetings of April 3rd, 2018. Are there any comments or changes to that meeting? Seeing none, I will make a motion to approve the April 3rd, 2018 special city council meeting minutes as presented. Is there a second, please? And it is four-two-zero. Very good, and it has passed. Thank you, Johnny. Next is the consent calendar. I'm going to turn this over to our Mr. Randy Binder, our city manager. Randall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Good afternoon. There are only four items on your consent calendar today, and I would like to dedicate the reading of the consent calendar today to the memory of my friend and former council member and mayor, the city of Rancho Mirage, Gordon Moller, would have been 80 years old today. So the consent calendar has four items. The first one, Mr. Mayor, would be to waive full reading of the ordinances that are introduced or adopted pursuant to today's agenda, or you can have Isaiah read them all.
Maybe I should do this now it's my last meeting. Huh? Oh, all right.
There's a lot, have you seen the size of this?
That's why I thought it would be the best one. Get reservations at six for dinner.
How about the first meeting in June? Let's make it the first one in June.
You're off the hook.
August. Special meeting in August, Mr. Mayor?
Special meeting in August, yes. That's a good one. Yeah, I'm sure a lot of people will show up on that.
Assistant city manager suggests that.
I will.
Just for the record. Item number two on your consent calendar is a request by city engineer Bill Enos, a second extension of completion for parcel map 30150, Leonid Mankowski and Linda Marlin. This is a map that has three estate lots on five acres on the east side of Vista Dunes, west side of Monterey, about a quarter mile south of Frank Sinatra Drive. The project is almost completed, and this extension would allow the developer to complete the improvements on site.
Okay.
Recommending approval of that. Item number three on your consent calendar are approval of two contracts, and the details are listed in your packet.
Thank you.
That includes an extension of the County of Riverside Cal Fire Agreement to provide services to the city. And item number four, Mr. Mayor, are demands, all the checks that the city has cut to keep the economy humming, and we are here to answer any questions. When I say "we," I mean my great staff.
Very good. Thank you, Randy. Are there any comments from the public or any council members on these consent items? Seeing none out there, are there any here? Okay, seeing none here, then I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented. Is there a second, please? And the vote is four-two-zero, and it has passed. Thank you. Next is reports and informational items. We will now receive an RMEA update from Isaiah Hagerman, Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We are approaching our May 1st, 2018 launch date for the Rancho Mirage Energy Authority. And Jason, why don't we go ahead and bring up the website? So, under this program, as a resident or a business in this community, this program will save you 5% on your generation rate on your Southern California Edison bill. And we're really wrapping up with our massive outreach campaign that we did for this program, and the results that we are seeing so far are fantastic. There are very, very few opt-outs, which means the vast majority of people are staying within the program. In fact, our consultants in this process have never seen participation rates as high as ours. So the community is reacting well to it, and I think it helped with the amount of public outreach that we did on this program. We developed this program over a two-year period, and I think the results are really paying off. And with our website, if there's anybody out there that has a question, it's very easy to get ahold of us. Please call us here at City Hall. You can come to our website, and there's several ways that you can get ahold of us. So if you come down here to the bottom of our website, you can submit a question directly right here, or at the top of our website, you can come to the Contact Us, and you can email us questions. You can call our customer service hotline, which is open Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. by calling the number on your screen here. There's also a ton of information about the program and how it works and what your options are under this program. And again, the, the great thing about this program is it is a choice. So nobody has to participate if they don't want to. On our website, you can do everything under this program. You can learn about the choices that we offer you. You can opt out of the program if you want to stay on the higher-rate schedule of Southern California Edison. You can opt out of the program via the website, via the email. You can also, one of the choices that we added to the community is what we call opting up. That's if you want to voluntarily opt up to a 100% renewable energy plan. So 100% of the energy that you consume will be from renewable resources, and the city took the first step with that, and we opted up all 164 of the city's accounts. So our streetlights, our traffic control boxes, our city facilities, any meter that is connected to the city of Rancho Mirage as of May 1st will be 100% renewable energy, which is fantastic. The other exciting element of this program is, in addition to saving 5% on your generation rate, you're also, our community is going to be consuming a cleaner energy product. So our base plan that saves our residents and businesses that 5% on their generation rate is a 50% carbon-free mix. So it's cheaper and greener than Southern California Edison. With that, our solar, solar is a very important element out here in the desert, and as a homeowner, if you've already made the decision to go solar, you can learn about the impacts of this program on you, and there are some exciting enhancements to the net metering program that we offer via RMEA. We have worked closely with the local solar installers so that they can inform their customers as well. But if you are a solar customer, you can come right here to our website, and we've got all the details that you will need so that you can make an informed decision. So as of May 1st, it'll be our power going through the Edison poles and wires, and our community will start saving as of May 1st at that 5% on their generation rate. And that's my update for today.
Very good. I had the opportunity yesterday, as I sit on the board of directors for my homeowners' association, and as we were going through the budget, I said, "Now, guys, you're going to get a little savings here." So they figured it out, and they were absolutely thrilled to see that. That's the big savings with all the communities that we have behind gates. I have one other question. What happens when somebody buys a new home and moves in? Does the Edison company send them a notice, or do we?
Yep.
On the program?
So, Southern California Edison is still the utility, so they will open or close that account with Southern California Edison, and then at that point, they are notified by Southern California Edison that they are opening an account in a CCA service territory and that they are automatically enrolled in, and then they get the letters that everyone else has been getting during this process.
Boy, you guys didn't miss anything with this here. Thank you, Isaiah. Anybody in the public wish to speak or ask any questions on this? All right, seeing none? Any council members have any comments? Okay, seeing none? Then we are going to move along to the public hearings. This is the time and the place for the public hearing in this city council's proceedings for the city of Rancho Mirage Community Facilities District Number 4A, in parentheses, Del Webb Project. The hearing is to inquire into the formation of the Community Facilities District, the levy of special taxes in the Community Facilities District, and the need to incur bonded indebtedness to the Community Facilities District. Before I formally open these hearings, is there any interested person who wishes to file a written protest that will not be presented by the author of the protest at the hearings? If so, the protest must be filed with the city clerk now. Anybody out there? All right, seeing none, I will move along. The hearing is now officially opened. To have an orderly hearing, we will first have the presentations by staff and the consultants about the Community Facilities District. After that, we will receive comments and questions, and any oral protest from any interested persons. When all comments have been received, the hearing will be closed. Excuse me, I will turn this over to Isaiah Hagerman to present the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Consistent with the approved development agreement, on March 15th, 2018, the city council approved Resolution Number 2018-11 and Resolution Number 2018-12, which called for the public hearing that we are conducting today. The purpose of today's hearing is to establish the Community Facilities District Number 4A, the Del Webb Project. And essentially, what this does is, as part of the development of that project, there are some significant public improvements that are, are being made. And under this process, some of those public improvements will be financed with the bond proceeds that will be coming from a future debt issuance. And then that debt is not debt of the city of Rancho Mirage, it is specific to that project. So it'll be repaid by the property owners within that project. And this is similar to the other Melrose districts that we have in our city now, under these same facts and circumstances of significant public improvements that are financed over a 30-year period by the homeowners that benefit directly from those public improvements. So under this process, and the Del Webb Project and the development of it, there are anticipated to be six phases of development for the 1,028 single-family homes that are to be developed. The proposed actions today in CFD Number 4A cover the first two phases of development, which is 324 single-family homes. It is expected that future CFDs will be created for the later phases of the project as they develop, and those would be CFD Number 4B and Number 4C. Today's actions are only on CFD Number 4A. Annually, the debt service requirements would be assessed onto property tax rolls, which funds the debt service. It's anticipated that the portion of CFD taxes is expected to range from $800 to $1,800 per year, depending on the home size that is selected by the homeowner. All homeowners are notified during the purchase process of the special taxes that they will be responsible for during the home-buying process. And again, the, the debt is estimated at about $8 million for this first phase, and prior to debt issuance, which is not expected until very late 2018 or early 2019, all those actions will come back to the city council for review and approval. And again, the debt being issued is not an obligation of the city of Rancho Mirage, we are just simply facilitating this process. There are no costs or fiscal, fiscal impacts to the city of Rancho Mirage as a result of this process. So for facilitating this process, the city is being reimbursed from a deposit that the developer has put in place with the city. And again, the future debt service of this debt is not funded by the city of Rancho Mirage. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Do any members of the public wish to speak regarding this item? All right, seeing none? Are there any questions or comments from the city council? All right, seeing none? At this time, I will call, close the public hearings. I will call for a motion to adopt the resolutions listed as A through C in the staff report. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Right, do we need to?
Well, you called for a motion, so you need someone to make the motion.
Ted, you want to make the motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that the city council adopt the resolutions listed as A through C in the staff report.
All right. And then what?
I think we should read them.
You want to read them?
Yes.
All right, Steve will read them.
So it's Resolution Number 2, 2018, next in order, establishing City of Rancho Mirage Community Facilities District Number 4A, Del Webb Project, and providing for the levy of a special tax therein to finance the acquisition and construction of certain public facilities. B, Resolution Number 2018, next in order, deemed it necessary to incur bonded indebtedness to finance the acquisition and construction of certain public facilities within the city of Rancho Mirage Community Facilities District Number 4A, Del Webb Project. And Resolution Number 28, next in order, calling special mail ballot election within City of Rancho Mirage Community Facilities District Number 4A, Del Webb Project.
Okay, now we are, we are made, and we are seconded, so we can move on to a vote. Steve?
Yes.
Richard?
Steve, I have one question. Regarding items D, E, and F, are those not voted on at this time and put off to the future?
The city clerk's going to have to open the ballots. The city clerk's going to have to open the ballots.
That comes next, Richard. The next item.
So we're calling the election, and we're holding the election, but we have to do the first three first, and she will open the ballots.
That's step two of today's hearing.
Yeah, there's two parts of it, that's how we're doing it. All right, so is the pop right? And we're ready to vote? Please vote. Okay, it's 4 to 0. Passing, thank you. At this time, I will ask the city clerk to open the ballot and announce the results of the election. Johnny? All right, you can tell us.
I got it. The ballot for the 132 eligible votes is in favor. Therefore, all votes cast equal 100% of total eligible votes. No protests were received.
Very good. Thank you, Johnny. The results of the election being unanimously in favor of the incurring of bonded indebtedness, the levy of the special taxes, and the establishment of the appropriations limit, we may now proceed with the final actions for the Community Facilities District. And Steve, how do you want to do this one?
You could do... You can adopt the resolutions and then introduce the ordinance.
All right, do we need to read?
Yes, I believe it's important to read them.
You want to do that now, or?
Yeah, if somebody makes a motion to...
I will make a motion?
And second it, then I will read it.
Okay.
So...
Now you go.
So the motions include, the motion includes the adoption of Resolution Number 2018, next in order, declaring results of special mail ballot election within the city of Rancho Mirage Community Facilities District Number 4A, Del Webb Project. The next, E, Resolution Number 2018, next in order, approving the execution and delivery of an acquisition and funding agreement and a joint community facilities agreement with the Coachella Valley Water District in connection with City of Rancho Mirage Community Facilities District Number 4A, Del Webb Project, two additional community facilities districts, and other matters related there, too. And introduce ordinance number, next in order, levying special taxes within the city of Rancho Mirage Community Facilities District Number 4A, Del Webb Project.
Very good. I will call for a motion to adopt the resolutions as D through F in the staff report and introduce the first reading of the ordinance listed as F in the staff report. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. And it passes 4 to 0. Thank you, Johnny. Let's see, item number seven is a resolution regarding approval, the SB 1 project list. Jesse Eckenrath, Director of Public Works, will present the staff report. Jesse?
Thank you, Mayor and city council. The staff report that's before you is a formality to be eligible for SB 1 funds, but to give some context and some background, I prepared a presentation highlighting some of the key points of SB 1. So SB 1 is a Senate bill that was signed by Governor Brown in April of 2017. SB 1 implementation began in November of 2017, and the bill is programmed to last 10 years. The purpose of SB 1 is to assist through financial contributions and the research, planning, construction, and construction of public transportation projects with a primary focus on infrastructure and road maintenance. The SB 1 funds come from several mechanisms. In November of 2017, there was an increase to regular fuel prices of 12 cents per gallon and 20 cents per gallon for diesel fuel. There is an increased registration that funds SB 1, and that happened January 1st, 2018. So you can see in the table, you will have an additional fee for your vehicle registration based on the value. So for example, if your vehicle's between $25,000 to $34,999, you will have an additional $100 fee on your vehicle registration that will go to fund roadway projects. And then on July 1st, 2020, there's going to be a $100 per vehicle registration fee for zero-emission vehicles, and zero-emission vehicles are those vehicles that are fueled by anything other than gasoline or diesel. And all of these upticks have automatic inflation adjustments. So the city's share of SB 1 funding is constrained by the allocation strategy in the bill. SB 1 gives the first piece of the pie to the state for various programs such as the state highway, bridge, and culvert programs. The remaining funds for SB 1 split 50% between the state and 50% between cities and counties. And of that 50%, counties get half and cities get half. The cities receive their proportionate share of funding based on population. With just over 18,000 residents... Want to go to the next slide, Jason? The city of Rancho Mirage is estimated to receive almost $305,000 this year for roadway maintenance. So in fiscal year 1819, gas tax revenues before SB 1 were estimated at $420,000, and SB 1 represents a 73% increase in gas tax revenue, bringing the total to $725,500. The fiscal year 1819 project selected for SB 1 funding is a pavement rehabilitation project on Monterey Avenue. This project would rehabilitate the west half or the southbound portion of Monterey, beginning at Heavely and ending at the Whitewater Channel. You want to go ahead and go to the next slide there? Here's the beginning of the project on Monterey Avenue at Heavely, and the next slide is where the project is anticipated to end. This is Monterey Avenue at the Whitewater Channel. So we plan to use a recycling method that grinds and re-immolifies the existing asphalt pavement for the top 2/3 of the asphalt and use a rubber hot mix for the top 1/3 of the asphalt. The length of the proposed rehabilitation is approximately 3/4 of a mile. The project is estimated to begin in the summer of 2019, and the cost is $750,000. So SB 1 has specific requirements that the city of Rancho Mirage must meet on an annual basis in order to be allocated the annual SB 1 funding. Each year, the city must submit a project list to the California Transportation Commission. The project list must be approved via a resolution of the city council and must be submitted to the California Transportation Commission by May 1st. At the end of the fiscal year, the city must submit a report of all the expenditures for the SB 1 eligible projects, and the city must also meet a minimum annual spending requirement of $1.6 million of general fund spending to retain the SB 1 funds allocated to the city. SB 1 funds are not allowed to supplant existing general fund spending, they must be used in addition to general fund spending. So the staff report with the resolution and project lists were developed in order to meet the requirements of the state, which will assure that Rancho Mirage receives its annual allocation of SB 1 funds. And as a reminder, all of these funds and fees are state-driven, these are not local. They are dispersed to us from the state on a monthly basis, and we have contacted the city of Palm Desert to let them know we are going to be doing a project that borders our city, and they show interest in joining with us on that project to do their side of the roadway as well. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jesse. Any council questions? All right, seeing none, it's a pretty thorough report there. You did it well.
Thank you.
All right, are there any questions for anybody in the audience on this subject? All right, seeing none, I will call for a motion.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that the city council adopt the attached Resolution Number 2018, next in order, approving the project list to be funded by the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Program in accordance with Senate Bill 1, the Quote, "Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017," unquote.
Thank you, Ted. A second, please. I will second it. Please vote. 4 to 0, it passes. Thank you, Johnny. We will now recess into closed session. Mr. Quintanilla, will you please introduce the closed session items?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council now is going to recess into closed session regarding the following matters: Conference of legal counsel regarding three potential initiation litigation items as pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4. City council will also meet to confer with legal counsel regarding the existing case known as Veronica Juarez versus City Rancho Mirage pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. And the council will consider the public employment of this new city manager pursuant to Government Code Section 54957A and confer with its labor negotiator, which is the city attorney, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6A, and that's regarding the city manager's position.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, everybody that came here today. Everybody's watching it on television, and we are now adjourned in a closed session. Thank you.
My compliments to the assistant city clerk today for an outstanding job.
Oh, yay!